And welcome you all to the April 12, 2021 Special City Council Meeting. We acknowledge we are on the traditional lands on Treaty Four territory, treaty signed with 35 First Nations across Southern Saskatchewan, parts of Alberta and Manitoba, and the original lands of the Cree, Sotu, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. To ensure social distancing is being met during this time, members of council and city administration, many of them are attending the meeting today through video conferencing. I would like to remind those members who are attending through video conferencing of the following: ensure your video and microphone are off, please, and if you wish to speak, you enter your name in the chat window in order to be placed in the queue. And when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. And all votes will be conducted with a recorded vote. I would like to note for the record that we have -- councillor LeBlanc is unable to attend today's special council meeting, so it will be nine councillors and the mayor who will have their vote recorded. Delegations are attending the meeting today through teleconferencing to address council on very -- on the items on the agenda. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved Hawkins.
Thank you. I do need a seconder, please?
I'll second, Zakitniak.
Thank you councillor, and I'll call the question. Are any opposed? Hearing none, carried. We'll now hear delegations on CM 21-6. I would like to call upon delegation Gilbert Ledrèse, representing Federated Co-op Limited. Please introduce yourself for the record, and you'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any question that members of councils may have for you. Good afternoon, Mr. Ledrèse.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Gil Ledrèse. I'm vice president of refinery operations for Federated Cooperatives Limited. I believe my associate Pam is on the line as well, and we'll speak first.
I think, I believe she's just joining the meeting. Good afternoon, Ms. Pam Skidnitsky. Good afternoon, Ms. Skidnitsky, are you available?
Yes, speaking.
Okay. I'll go through what I went through. You'll introduce yourself, and you'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions that members of council may have for you.
Okay, thank you. Am I ready to go?
You're ready to go, ma'am.
All right, and is Gil Ledrèse joining me, our vice president of the refinery?
Yes, ma'am, he is on the line.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'm Pam Skidnitsky, I'm vice president of strategy of Federated Cooperatives Limited. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the objection to the motion that is before council today. We want to be on record that we vehemently oppose this motion, which would see 633 acres of land north of the Co-op refinery complex sold to an unnamed source for a number of reasons. To begin with, we are concerned with the rush process of the sale of land. As a direct stakeholder, we are both an owner and an occupant of the land adjacent to that that is being potentially sold. We were not consulted and learned about the sale process through this CBC article. Preferential treatment appears to be taking place for this land, as the land is now being sold below the assessed value of $6.3 million. The land sale was never discussed with FCL, nor the option to purchase the land provided to us. Finally, the lack of competitive process and transparency regarding the sale of the land has us very concerned. We have publicly announced and made the city available, aware of our acquisition of True North Renewable Fuels. This purchase highlighted our interest in locating a renewable diesel plant adjacent to the refinery. Without access to land, it jeopardizes that investment. In my comments to city council in January, I highlighted our energy roadmap that's going to see significant investments by Co-op to reduce the environmental footprint of our transportation fuels. This could jeopardize those investments that we have planned. Despite our objection to the proposed land, we offered a solution, and a letter I wrote to you, Mayor Masters, dated April the 11th, and we hope that that is a solution that's considered because it respects the interests of all stakeholders. In the letter, we outline a solution to optimize the value the land would have and would allow acreage being requested to the unknown entity as well as to FCL to accommodate both of those economic investments that we are talking about. We would see it rolling out on the same commercial terms. Our timeline is similar, and we could accommodate the dates noted. This would correspond to the timeline to conclude the work that we have currently underway, considering our investment. The alternative we propose recognizes both the city's desire to attract commercial development and also recognizes the longstanding and ongoing economic commitment FCL has with the city of Regina. With that, I'll hand the floor to Gil to expand upon this. Gil?
Okay, you know, what we're both looking for is sustainable growth and economic generators that provide that sustainability. The Co-op refinery has been that economic generator for the Co-op system, the agricultural community, and the city of Regina for over 85 years. The refinery has a large economic impact on the city and creates many jobs in and around the city. Some of our historical economic spinoffs through large investments and job creations have been the upgrade in the 80s of $800 million, the expansion we did in the early 2000s of $430 million, and our recent expansions between 2010 to 2013 of $2.7 billion. We have an annual capital spending typically of $150 to $250 million per year. This is similar to the Mosaic Stadium that was built for $278 million over three years. We do that type of investment all the time, each and every year. This creates economic spinoff for local suppliers and contractors. The current permanent job here on site is 900 people with annual payroll in excess of $120 million in or near the city of Regina where they all live, plus another 200 active contractor jobs that we employ at any given time. And with our 300 truck fleet, we create additional jobs delivering fuel all across Western Canada. And with turnaround that's currently going on, we create another in excess of 1,000-plus temporary jobs in the city, and in a normal year that fills up the hotels and restaurants. Overall, many jobs in Regina exist due to the work and supplier agreements companies have with the refinery. We know that the energy business is in transition, and we've been working on plans over the last few years to be part of that transition. And we want the opportunity to do a potential multi-billion dollar investment with an integrated ag complex as part of that energy transition in and near the city of Regina. That would create many, many jobs and another economic engine for the Co-op system and the city. If we are boxed in for growth and expansion, we will have to consider other options that include locations outside the city. We ask that you please consider the options we've presented for a transparent, fairly administered process to bid on the land in question, or the land sale be reconfigured to give us an opportunity Federated Cooperatives Limited at the same commercial terms that you are considering granting to this undisclosed proponent. Thank you for giving us the opportunity today to present our case to you.
Thank you. Do any members of council have any questions for the delegates?
I do, Mayor Masters, my chat is not working.
Thank you. Councillor Brashiani?
Thank you, thank you for coming forward today. So I just want to be clear, Ms. Skidnitsky, you'd indicated that this, if this land piece goes forward, it would jeopardize the investment that was made with True North or that partnership. Can you just elaborate on that? Why this acreage that would be left would not be enough through you, Madam Mayor?
Right, so the amount of land that we need for our renewable diesel facility and the integrated ag complex, that investment that Gil referenced, two over $2 billion of investment that we're looking at, really does then require it to be located adjacent to our refinery facility. That does have a lot of synergies that we would take a look at. So when we acquired True North, it was a good idea. We have the manufacturing know-how, we have the distribution facilities, we've got the end consumer retail network that we can actually make that a reality. But if it's not located adjacent to the refinery complex, we have to then determine how we take that entire integrated play and remove it elsewhere, because the value is in the integrated play that has a fullsome agriculture complex that's associated with it. So if we don't have the 600 acres that part and parcel located together, ideally adjacent to the refinery complex, then we have to seek 600 acres that consolidated elsewhere.
Thank you. To you, Madam Chair, I think I heard you say $2 billion in investment, and is that accurate?
In excess of $2 billion, yes.
In excess, okay, thank you. Can I just ask, you know, this, why hasn't FCL come forward or spoke, or has there been discussions with our administration or real estate in regards to anything like this prior to kind of hearing an announcement about this land through the chair?
You know, that's a valid question. I guess in hindsight, we should have entered into a non-disclosure agreement and had some of those conversations. We are definitely working in haste to be able to outline what our project is. We've had the True North facility and acquisition that we shared with the city. We'd indicated that we had an energy roadmap with multi billions of dollars that we were considering in investments, and we really need to engage more proactively with the city administration through those conversations. So that is definitely something we need to be following up on in the very short term.
So I just, the last question, just to be clear, I just, on the acreage, because I know there was somewhat of a map that was submitted, just the recommendation of moving of a different parcel, can you just elaborate on that through the chair?
Sure, so when we looked at the land, it really spoke to the land sort of up the middle, so it splits the amount on each side. I think there was almost 150 acres on each side. So when we were looking at how could we accommodate the 600 acres that we're looking at for versus the 600 acres that the other party was looking for, and we thought if we were just purely shifted over, why couldn't both of the opportunities be available for the city? Because we understand that you are interested in the economic generation that this is going to provide to the city. So we were trying to look at a creative solution that would enable both parties' needs to be met if we are both interested in about 600 acres.
Thank you. And just the last question I have is, I know that FCL has put in a lot of investment into their own infrastructure that was needed up there. Can you just elaborate on that?
Sorry, to clarify the question, we've -- on the refinery specifically?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Gil, do you want to maybe speak to the investments that we make into the refinery operation?
I think it's in reference, if I can ask for clarification, the question is in reference into land that we currently rent from the city that we've made investments in? Is that what the question is with regards to?
That's accurate. I guess the, yes, that's accurate.
So, yeah, we currently rent some land from the city to the north and to the east of the refinery, towards the city landfill, and that land has been developed predominantly for storage of equipment and laid up. So it has roads on it that are paved, and some roads are just graded, and it has concrete pads on it for storage and some facilities on it to store equipment. So that's what it's currently being used at. It is nowhere large enough to build a facility on, no.
Great, thank you. And I guess just the last question is that in the letter that was submitted, that the Co-op refinery would be looking at similar terms that would be offered if they were to purchase or move forward this land, is that accurate?
Yes, I did review the terms, and it indicated that the other proponent had one year to exercise and then two years for construction, and we could certainly abide by that. It does correspond with the timeline for the major investment we're considering.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councillor Brashiani. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, I was having trouble with my chat here. Now, I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned to us that your spending will change, money that you've invested into FCL will change, is that correct? And can you tell me how this will change if this other project goes through, through the chair?
So the investments that we are making into Federated Co-op and into their refinery complex really is to ensure that we're continuously enhancing and reducing the environmental impact of our fuels. We see a couple of opportunities in that. I think that the city council would know about our acquisition of our ethanol complex, our Co-op Ethanol Complex at Bell Plain, that really was to enable us to have more renewable fuels on the ethanol side, which is then mixing with gas. This opportunity really is to then have a renewable diesel complex that enables us to address the renewable fuel content on the diesel side of our business, which has a significant runway. We've looked at demand over the course of time and see that this would be an economic opportunity for the next decades to come. So we see that opportunity to invest in this. Then it also looks at the relationship we have with our ag consumers. So we have a significant relationship right from the input through to the food that gets on the grocery stores. This would take it right from the farm gate to the tank where they could potentially be selling canola to us, that we would then process into oil products that would then be fed into renewable diesel complex. So that really, in essence, is the area that we see the opportunity to look at sustainability from a complex perspective, from a Co-op complex perspective, and from achieving some environmental goals that I think we share in common.
So the kind of answers, but kind of doesn't, you've seen these opportunities years ago, your spending changed to look into these type of opportunities. So through the chair, why is this now being mentioned as an opportunity to us, through the chair?
Okay, because the compliance has become very clear in December of last year, 2020, we received a clean fuel standard. We've been in consultation with the federal government for three years now to envision what a clean fuel standard would look like. That was published in draft in the Gazette One, Canada Gazette One, in December. So we were able to, at that point, start to really solidify what these investments will look like. That is why True North came forward when they did. That work was parallel to work that we were doing. Now those draft regulations enable all parties to start making investment decisions. You've seen announcements around renewable diesel, if you would either have seen them or if you want to take a look at Googling that, there are more and more announcements coming forward on a daily basis, and it's because of that regulatory certainty. As I mentioned, those regulations are in draft and will be finalized this December. So all of those business cases can be confirmed and investment decisions can be made. Ultimately, these are large capital projects that will take four to five years, once engineering is complete, for construction, so for that production to be brought online. So these are big investment decisions with a long timeline. I hope that answers your question.
Kind of. You know what, that's all for now, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. Do any other members of council have a question for the delegation? Seeing none, I'll thank you very much for the presentation this afternoon, both written and verbal, and ask that you please leave the meeting now.
Okay, thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. I would like to call upon delegation Murad Al Khatib with AGT Food. Please introduce yourself for the record. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions that members of council may have for you. Good afternoon, Mr. Al Khatib.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to address council today on this special meeting. And, you know, coming forward as a, another company based in Regina, I wanted to just express to council my concern with the process that is going forward on this particular land transaction. Now, there's been a lot of discussion and, you know, presentations, you know, made to council and to administration over the last number of months, you know, related to the strategy of development of our economy in Regina and Regina region. You know, in particular, my sector that I'm involved in, the agriculture sector, and the ability of this region to develop the opportunity around protein and around agriculture and agriculture and food hubs around Regina region. Now, one of the major constraints for Regina region is the availability of, you know, large parcels of land that can be both serviced and also have proper access to rail infrastructure. That is quite a constraint around Regina region. And, you know, the lands in question that are being considered to be given, you know, to a party, you know, in this particular process at a value below the fair market value of those lands, you know, are actually lands that, you know, potentially have good servicing opportunity and also very strong rail access with both the Canadian National Railways and Canadian Pacific Railway spurs, you know, going right near the adjacent lands. So, you know, part of my concern is that, you know, as a player involved in Regina and Regina region, you know, we'd like to have the opportunity, you know, when these types of lands are going to be available and the city is considering the possibility of allowing these lands to go for development, that we'd like to see, you know, transparent and open processes that allow both Regina companies who are looking at expanding in the region and also companies who are looking to locate to Regina, to have that opportunity to look at these parcels and to consider the economic impact of having those lands integrated into our plans. You know, at AGT, we've been very vocal on the concept of integrated agricultural processing complexes, which will integrate the processing of the crops that are grown in the Regina Plains, that will be processed into products, and the various streams of product can be utilized in different methods of processing. And one of those very exciting opportunities is the opportunities that we're working on in plant-based protein, and that would include pulse crops, which we've been doing already, and also the opportunity both on wheat and also on canola. You know, to be looking at canola and wheat as further crops that could have very material opportunity for processing in the Regina region, you know, land availability, rail access, and servicing are all key elements of successful processing. And when I look at that opportunity for both plant-based and also renewable fuels, and the opportunities that have been publicly, you know, discussed even with the support of the city of Regina and the support of this council in the recently announced True North transaction, and the recent announcement by Federated Co-op of their acquisition of True North Company and its assets, this further highlights this opportunity in Regina region. And, you know, part of the development of an integrated ag processing complex will be to give the opportunity for companies who are planning to do that integration, to have the opportunity to properly diligence locations, properly put the business structures in place, to ensure that we understand the connectivity of these projects. And, you know, when I look at the development of plant-based processing in Regina region, byproducts and process streams all have to be monetized, and that opportunity in canola, you know, into the renewable fuels is a major opportunity, and one that we have been quite active in developing, both with our investments in short-line railways that are connected to Regina and the Regina Plains, and also through our continued work and innovation around the protein extraction process on both pulses and canola and canola meal. So part of my reason to come forward, Madam Chair, is to, you know, express a desire for council to consider pausing this process, taking a look at the available lands. When I look at the land parcel in the middle of this large parcel of rail-adjacent serviceable land, I question the sense of taking that parcel in the middle and really stranding lands on both sides and really limiting that opportunity, you know, that I do see to look at a processing node for the ag value-added processing strategy of Regina Plains that may be possibly linked into the Federated Co-op announcements or intentions that have been stated publicly in their energy roadmaps and their other work that they've been doing. So I'm going to end my presentation there, Madam Chair, just wanted to get my perspective on record, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Al Khatib. I see, Councillor Shaw, you have a question for the delegation?
I do, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I just have a quick question. Mr. Al Khatib, did you respond to the April 3 leader post notice for the disposition of this land, through you?
I did not, actually, did not see the notice, and the notice was, you know, with just land descriptions and no maps, and it wasn't brought to my attention until it was released publicly that there was a council meeting to consider. And at that time, you know, when we realized the lands that were in question, you know, we immediately contacted contacts within city administration and otherwise to inquire about the process and to express our, you know, concern and our interest in the properties that would have that type of servicing and that type of rail potential.
Right, so just to clarify, you didn't respond to the April 3 just because you weren't sure of the land that was getting, the disposition was going through, what part of the land?
We didn't, yeah, we didn't see, we didn't see the notice. The notice wasn't, we didn't see the notice, and when we did become aware, then we immediately, you know, tried to express our interest.
Right, okay, thank you. I was just trying to clarify that we did do our due diligence, and I was just wondering if it was because we weren't clear on what we posted on the April 3, or if there was a mistake in our part, that's all.
Well, to be honest, to be honest, I don't think I was suggesting there was any mistake. The notice was published on the 3rd, and I think it closed on the 9th, you know, which was a six-day notice period with no maps and just land description.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Are there any other members of council who have a question of the delegation? Seeing none, I'll thank you very much for presenting this afternoon, Mr. Al Khatib, for your presentation, and ask that you please leave the meeting.
Thank you very much.
We'll now consider CM 21-6 Economic Opportunity Option to Purchase Agreement. Mr. Barry Lacy, could I ask that you please introduce the report? Oh, pardon me, Mr. Holden, I'll actually turn both your mics on.
Thank you, Mayor Masters. I'll start and make some general comments, and then I will ask Mr. Lacy to speak to the detail of the report in front of you. But just to, you know, provide some comment on the concerns raised from the delegation. This is a public process. The conversation today at a special meeting of city council is so that we can have a public discussion. Just in terms of process, and it was mentioned that there was notice provided on April 3 of the city's intent to explore an option to sell this land at below market value. The report was released to the city Regina website on April 6, and then, of course, you know, the purpose of that is to let citizens, organizations be aware of what the city is considering. And, you know, the delegations have come forward today, they've expressed their concern in terms of the openness and the transparency, and I think expressing in terms of the openness and the transparency, and I think expressing an opportunity that they, through this process, they will not have an opportunity to acquire the lands in question. I think it's also important that the lands that are in front of you today, the city has never been approached by an interested party in terms of a discussion about purchase of those lands or an option on those lands, other than the proposal that you see in front of you today. So, with that, I will ask Mr. Lacy just to highlight the detail of the report.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Masters. So, this report's genesis comes from the city being approached by an independent commercial party, which I'll refer to as the company, regarding an economic development opportunity that would be developed on city land north of the city, and that is shown in Appendix A of the report. If located in Regina, the development would represent a significant investment by the company and substantial economic opportunity for the city of Regina and area. The development would employ a significant number of construction jobs, followed by ongoing permanent jobs, as well as indirectly supporting another 1,500 jobs in the Regina area ongoing. Overall, the development, if it proceeds, is projected to add approximately 500 million to the Regina region's gross domestic product. Multiple geographic locations are being evaluated by the company for this development. To support the opportunity and encourage its construction in Regina, the report is recommending granting an option to purchase the city-owned lands at a price of 4 million, which is below the 6.3 million market value of the lands. The option to purchase would be required to be exercised within a term of one year. And further, if the option is exercised, the company would have two years from the date the option is exercised to begin construction. If construction is not started within two years, the city would have the ability to buy back the land at the purchase price of 4 million, less the option fee. It's expected the city and the company will need to come to agreement on a number of other matters related to development, which would require future council approvals. And I would just note the company's name and the nature of the economic development opportunity are confidential at this time, due to the competitive nature of the opportunity and to protect the competitive interests of the company. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have someone move the report, please?
Andrew.
Counselor Mansonelli? And can I have someone second?
Start the chat.
Andrew.
Okay. I'll leave it to the, I'll take Counselor Stanich on that one. Okay, thank you. Can I ask if members of council have questions for administration? Counselor Mansonelli? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Counselor Stevens, I believe you're first.
Actually, Counselor Mansonelli moved it. He's welcome to begin questions.
Thank you for checking my process on that, Counselor Stevens. Counselor Mansonelli?
Sure, I'll step up. Through the chair, the comments made by the delegations in respect to the parcels chosen, were they just after those, that amount of land, or are they stuck on the parcels selected as laid out in the map?
So, through you, Mayor Masters, the conversations we've had with the company are related to those parcels of land. We've had no other conversations with them with respect to, with respect to other parcels.
Through your negotiations, being that you're more in line with things, the comments upon the delegation about access and everything else, does that give you any pause or any rethought? Do you think we could rethink parcels, or is this a pretty firm process already?
Through you, Mayor Masters, I think that's very difficult for me to comment on that. The conversations with this company that have been ongoing now have been with these particular parcels of land. I do know that in part why we're having a special council meeting here is that our understanding is their board will be looking at the various options for them to locate this opportunity to very soon. And as a result, you know, I think the timing of this piece is critical as well. And with respect to whether or not they'd be interested in other parcels or not, I have, I can offer no opinion on that, other than to indicate that I know they will be making a decision relatively soon, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mansonelli. Counselor Stevens?
Great, thank you. Just to start with a question on the logistics of, should this deal go through? We receive X amount of revenue highlighted in this report. Where does that money go, and can that then be used to actually service the land and make it actually primed for industrial development?
Through you, Mayor Masters. So, the report does mention there are a number of other items that we would yet need to discuss with that company that would likely require future council approvals. And so, it might be useful just to talk about some of those, because I think it brings it into perspective. So, first off, the company is also looking for potentially tax abatement, at least for the first number of years, that that development is up and operational. And so, that assumes that there would be an alteration to city boundaries to bring those properties within the city. So, even though there might be an initial tax abatement that's eventually agreed to, ongoing, there would be substantial additional property taxes potentially coming to the city. As well, one of the pieces that requires further discussion is servicing of the site. So, the city is landowner of that site, would service the site, which would then open up parts of that northern area for other development as servicing will be available.
Thank you. Through the chair, follow-up. What we're debating here is really just the sale of 633 acres. Some of the delegates have spoken about the need for an integrated industrial facility, all sorts of pretty exciting plans. By my math, that still leaves 982-some acres north of these rail lines. Is that correct? And that, that money could still be purchased by any of the delegates and parties that have come before us today, correct?
Through you, Mayor Masters, so yes, the city does own substantial sections of land to the west, south, and east of the proposed area for purchase. And I actually have not added up to acreage, but I do think it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, probably 6 or 7 quarter sections.
Thank you. And I believe, Mr. Lacy, you mentioned this, but I might have missed it. Just to be clear, we purchased this in 1975, and in recent history, we have not seen any substantial interest in this land or any of the lands around there, correct? So, we're not choosing this offer over others that are coming forward.
Through you, Mayor Masters, so, you know, I think from time to time, parties are interested in our lands, but this is the first, I would say, substantial interest that we've received in these parcels of lands. That's correct.
Thank you. Just a final comment. Just so the public is aware, council has been briefed. We are not walking into this in the dark. In addition to the economic assessment that is available in this report, we have seen a more complete figure. So, I just, I think it's important to convey to Regina that this is an important opportunity. We see it's worthwhile. We've seen some of the additional figures, and I think the city as a whole, both as a municipal corporation and as a community, would see some meaningful economic impacts should this particular project go ahead. So, for that reason, I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stevens. Any other members of council wish to ask a question?
Mayor Masters, it's Counselor Rusianni. My chap is not talking, so if I can speak.
Absolutely, Counselor Rusianni, go ahead.
Thank you very much. For administration, the Co-op refinery, it would be the only, I guess, company out there that would be adjacent to this land. In our engagement policy, and I know it is with residential, I don't know what it is with, with any kind of commercial or industrial, is there no notification that would be needed to notify any adjacent neighbor in regards to anything like that, through the chair?
So, through you, Mayor Masters, there is no specific requirement to, for us to notify an adjacent property owner. In this particular case, we did notify the company or the individual that is directly impacted, should this go ahead, and that would be the firm or the company that is currently leasing these lands for a farming operation. So, they were notified that this report would be coming forward. I think it becomes very challenging when you talk about economic interests and potential development opportunities that come to the city. Due to the competitiveness, I think of some of those opportunities, I think some thought and caution needs to be thought about and put in place with respect to how you protect that opportunity and that company's interest vis-à-vis others. And I think that is always a challenging piece with respect to determining what, if any, additional consultation should be required in these type of opportunities. I don't think it's a straightforward matter.
Thank you for that. Through you, Madam Chair, I guess that leads me to my next question, and it's about really some kind of a, of a, of a policy or some kind of, I know we don't have a real estate corporation, but it does concern me a little bit that, you know, of these come forward, and we, we really haven't, you know, these become almost, I've heard the word "one-offs", because there's, they're investing 800 millions of, you know, dollars. We've heard from the delegation, they're going to be into the billions. How do we move forward from this to ensure that we absolutely are doing our due diligence, but also the concern is not to pit one against the other? And I agree with you, Mr. Lacy, this is very difficult because of the, of the privacy and that. But how would we in future, or what are your thoughts on that we need to have a policy in this regard moving forward? Through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Masters. So, I think that's a great question, and that's actually something even predating this opportunity that EDR and its city administration have been discussing, the need to have some type of a broader policy framework or a conceptual framework under which, when economic opportunities do present themselves to the city, what is the framework? What are the policies that would guide decision-making around what levels of support the city may want to provide for those opportunities? And so, we have actually been actively working with EDR. EDR has been leading this, but the city administration has been a, is a significant partner in the development of what we're calling a competitive framework or competitiveness framework. And that framework in part would, we envision, would provide kind of a broader policy framework around which these type of opportunities would be evaluated, not only for the benefit to the Regina and Regina area, but what type of supports the city may wish to provide, depending on the opportunity presented. So, we are currently working on that framework, and we are targeting with EDR to bring something to council by the end of June.
Thank you for that. That would be, that would be an overarching policy for industrial and commercial, is that right?
Through you, Mayor Masters, that's correct.
Thank you. I guess the, the last question I have, and we heard from the delegation in regards to looking at the, the pieces of land, and, you know, it's not our job to pick winners and losers as a city. I think we want to ensure that we've got the most economic development possible within our city, that, that everybody wins. Was there any, and it probably takes off of Counselor Mansonelli's question, but to the recommendation that to consider or even just take back in conversation, the moving it over, the land over just a little bit, so it could accommodate both, so it could be a win-win? Is that something that could be considered, through the chair? Privately, and again, that would be something that, it would just be a take-back, a takeaway? It wouldn't be having anything that comes back, but could be considered, or, through the chair?
Through you, Mayor Masters, I mean, you can always ask, I guess. So, there's nothing preventing asking. And like I say, I've had no conversations with the company regarding this, and I do know their decision-making timelines, as they've articulated to me are very tight. But there's nothing preventing us asking that.
Thank you for that. I would appreciate, appreciate that in the fact that, I mean, if it's already too far gone, but I would appreciate when we look, when we are looking at holistically, that we heard also the other delegation, it would be billions of dollars, which again, would be, or, sorry, two, over excessive of 2 billion, which would be, again, very vitally important for our city. So, I, that is my, that would be my takeaway, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rusianni. Counselor Shaw?
Thank you. I just have, just some clarification, and I, and I think you made it pretty clear. This is a question to administration. Through the chair, can you just go over roughly the proper due diligence that you, that you did in order, in this land and, and the acquisition for, on the sale of this land, or possible sale of this land? Through the chair.
Sorry, Mr. Holden?
So, through you, Mayor Masters, you know, each time an economic investment opportunity comes to the administration, obviously, we enter into some discussion and negotiation depending on really what the opportunity is. At that point, of course, all decisions, unless there's some delegated authority to the administration, require a discussion on the council floor. In this case, you're here, we're here today because this obviously is a sale of property at below-market value, and that requires council approval. But each one of, each proposal is somewhat unique. You know, the impacts in terms of the economic impact, the level of investment, the potential for job creation, the potential for impact on GDP, et cetera, all of those are explored by the administration, and then, of course, we present that information as appropriate to council. Obviously, it needs to inform council's decision. And, you know, the process that we've gone through here with the company in question is consistent with what happens in other jurisdictions. You know, at the end of the day, we are competing to try and attract investment into our community, which grows our community, which grows jobs, which grows our tax base, really makes Regina a more attractive location to, first of all, attract investment, but also just to grow our community, you know, enhance facilities, et cetera, so that residents and visitors to Regina can enjoy a, a positive quality of life.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, my computer froze. Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Counselor Sakidniak?
Thank you. I just have a few comments that I, I, I will be supporting this, this request, and I think it's wonderful that, you know, there, we have this possible opportunity coming to our city. The timing is really key for this sort of economic development opportunity. However, I did have some hesitations with the timeline and the lack of a policy on our end in terms of how do we evaluate these opportunities? I'm for, I'm pleased that we will have, that this sort of framework is being developed. I'm for, I'm pleased that we will have, that this sort of framework is being developed and we will be coming back to council in June so that we can have a better process in place moving forward and address some of the concerns that have been brought forward by some of the delegates in terms of our process. I certainly think that we done, that the city administration has done a thorough job and have, and that we, you know, we've certainly investigated this opportunity and asked questions and done our due diligence. And I look forward to a more, a more thorough policy moving forward of how we would deal with these situations as they come up. So thank you to administration for all the work on this.
Thank you, Councilors Zekidniak. Do any other councillors have any questions of administration? Seeing none, I may have a few. Perhaps, Mr. Holden or Mr. Lacy, for either of you? There's a question asked by Councilman Resianni with regards to engagement, and I guess I'm curious, what's the risk of performing engagement when there's a private deal of this magnitude in terms of sharing it with others?
Through you, through you, Mayor Masters, so these types of discussions are typically done in private, and those, they're for, for a number of reasons. So first of all, there's often, you know, competitive and proprietary reasons why discussions need to be in confidence. Sometimes there are requirements around entering into discussions with a publicly traded company. So there's a number of factors that require that the conversations be done in private as you look to negotiate a fairly, you know, significant opportunity to grow our community and grow our economy.
Counselor, my mic on. I have another question, and I believe Councilman Stevens brought this up. In 1975, these lands were purchased for $478,000. Just the 633 acres or all 1,000?
Through you, Mayor Masters, I believe it was just for the lands in question here, but I'll ask Mr. Trevetz if he could confirm the fact that it just relates to these four-quarter sections.
Through the chair, unfortunately, I wasn't here for that, but I believe with our research that it was just these four quarters that we're talking about for that price. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lacy, this question is for you, as I understand, you were involved for the last couple months anyways, relative to the deal. There's some question about potentially moving, but when I look at the plot, there are carve-outs of non-city land as well as rail running through one of the quarter sections. Do you have any knowledge, without of course divulging anything, would the lands configured the way they are on this proposal to accommodate the development of their use of, of whatever it is being proposed here?
Thank you, through you, Mayor Masters. So we didn't have specific conversations about why these four-quarter sections compared to some other configuration. I do know that rail access, I believe, will be something that this company is going to need to look at very closely. And so I would imagine to some extent that's factored into their determination of what they're looking for from a land location perspective.
I have nothing further. I'll ask one more time, do any other councillors have any questions of administration? Seeing none?
Counselor Manzonielli?
Counselman Manzonielli, would you like to close out the vote? Close out the discussion before vote?
No, I'm in support of this and I'm fine for now. Actually, you know what? I will ask one more question if I can.
Wait, go ahead.
The company in question, are they enough of a cornerstone to not only cause the need to activate the land with servicing, but potentially draw in the people who might be interested in surrounding them and selling the rest of the lands? Are they a big enough player to cause that kind of attraction?
So through you, Mayor Masters, this development of it proceeds, we believe, will result in spin-off opportunities in the surrounding area for, for additional business opportunities.
So very much transfer activation. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Manzonielli. Mr. City Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Thank you. I'll begin with Councilman Manzonielli, please.
Any favor?
Councilor Moore?
Absolutely, in favor.
Councilman Stadnichuk?
In favor.
Councilman Hawkins?
In favor.
Councilman Stevens?
In favor.
Councilman Resianni?
In favor.
Councilman Findura?
In favor.
Councilman Shaw?
In favor.
Councilman Zekidniak?
In favor.
Mayor Masters?
In favor.
Carries 10 to 0, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved, Hawkins.
Thank you, Councilman Hawkins. And a seconder?
Zekidniak.
Thank you, Councilor Zekidniak. Thank you, council. I guess I should ask any opposed? I'm supposed to do that, but I believe they're all leaving now. Thanks, guys. Have a great afternoon.